Thank you everyone for coming out tonight. This is just wonderful. It seems like maybe the first forum this season. And we will get started soon. So I'm going to be calling the candidates one by one. We'll do alphabetical, just like it was listed in emails. And we'll do the introductions all the way through. And then we'll start with questions. And every candidate will be able to choose one question. We'll go all the way down the line. And then we'll do it again for a second question. Candidates can get three questions. It's not a big one. It will be back up on the screen and going small. I'll try to make it bigger. They got three questions and they're going to be able to answer two of them. They're going to be able to choose two of those questions out of the three. The city council or city positions are specifically focused on the city. And the county positions, those questions are specifically focused on the county. For any elected official who is not a candidate this evening, would you stand and introduce yourself? Lisa Anderson in the back, City Council member.
I'm Lisa Anderson. I'm actually a candidate for City Council Board five, but I'm unopposed.
Thanks for coming, Lisa. Anyone else? All right, let's go ahead and fill these seats. The glasses are new from me, so. All right, so can we have Jason Cotton come on up? And we'll have you at the far left here. Mike Morales next. Garrett O'Brien. Paul Schistler. Russ Whitney. I am very sorry if I destroyed some of these names. Eamon Collins. Hannah Stone. Liz Darrow. Dan Hamel. Seth Fleetwood. Chris McCoy. Mike McCollum. Kim Lund. Barry Buchanan. Dan Purden. Alicia Rule. And Seth Mossid. Maybe we could later on play musical chairs. Really confuse folks. All right, so let me get us out of here by midnight. As the first introductions go around, I'm going to hand out some pages and some pens. I hope people did bring pens. I have 50 sheets where you can write notes on the candidates. Kind of a little reminder of what you thought about tonight for your own personal use. That that might be helpful. And so let's go ahead and start. At the far left, our right. And we have Tristan here in the green page in the middle. And he's going to show you yellow with 45 seconds left, 15 seconds. And then he'll raise his hand when it's been three minutes. Please do wrap it up at that time period. 10 seconds is fine after that, we're just going to have a shot. All right, the seats are white. Welcome up. And we're just going to stand up and your seat and I'll just give you the microphone.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Jason Cotton and I'm a candidate for at-large City Council. I'm running because I am a young person in this town that sees a real crisis of affordability. My rent has went up every year. I live here. I'm a former parent educator and end of a grocery worker. And most recently I've been an organizer working to flip seats from red to blue in the 42nd Legislative District and pass a healthy children's fund. And that work has met thousands of conversations with voters all across our city. I hear stories basically every day of young parents who need second of their jobs to afford childcare, of low-age workers, retirees whose rent won't stop climbing. And I think we need our local government to do its work with a pace that matches the urgency of these crises. When we have no broader solutions that take years to enact that should really only take months, I think we need to be honest that there's a problem. And as an organizer, the skills that I have to bring folks together to operate with strong principles, a sense of urgency, building coalitions, deep community engagement, those are skills I'm excited to bring to City Council. I'll also say that I recently received a DM from a trans person from South Carolina and moving to Bellingham to seek a seat with my future. And went to a great city club forum today, shout out to Amber. And I think there's a lot more we need to do as a city to build up our city and our social infrastructure to really take care of people who are going to move here because of climate crisis, because of abortion bans, because of discrimination in red states across the country. And we also just need to do better job to prepare the people who are here. I am really looking forward to a campaign where I can talk to many of you. The experiences I have to bring as a young person who's been a low-age worker and a renter, it's just one slice of really a crisis of affordability in the city that I think many of y'all can. We just need to have those critical conversations. And I think there's a lot more opportunities that we're leaving on the table that I look forward to talking more about. Thank you all so much.
Good evening. Can you guys hear me in the back? Well, I wanted to thank South Hill Neighborhood for putting this forum together. This, for me as a candidate, is the first time I've had the opportunity to talk to a group. So pleased to be here. My name is Garrett O'Brien. I'm running for the Bellingham City Council at-large position. And most of you probably know that there's multiple votes running in the primary. And every city resident can vote for the at-large position on August 1st. So look forward to the opportunity and try to earn your vote. I was born and raised in Bellingham. About the only time that I've been away from here is the five years that I went to Ellsberg and got my degree in central and construction management. It's where I met my wife, Brittany. She's here. We were talking in the car almost 20 years ago today, which is pretty cool. We've been able to raise our daughters here. We've got three kids, two in high school, one's in college over at University of Providence. And I started a contracting company and a home building company right when we got here in 2003. So 20 years I've been running that company. And my civic involvement started in 2012 when Maryland bill appointed me to the City Dog and Planning Commission, which was a real honor for me. As our community kind of grows, that connection that we have in a small town tends to get lost. And for me, that's my motivation for running for City Council is to try to expand my community and represent our town on some of the difficult issues that we're working on. One of the big things that our council is going to be working on in the next two years is going to be our comprehensive plan update, which is a really big project. It's a state requirement. We're required to do it every eight years. The last update was on the 2016. And I had the opportunity on the planning commission to work on that update. We look at the housing chapter, infrastructure, capital facilities. We look at parks, recreation, and open space. And we look at our environmental protection as well, too. So I think my experience holding those public hearings is going to suit me well for the next term at City Council. I learned how to be a good listener to our community. I learned to be responsive. I learned to receive criticism without taking it personally and realize that we all are passionate in the community that we live in and want to make it a better place. So thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Paul Schistler. I'm running also for City Council at large to fight against the primary. So August 1st, by August 1st, please vote. And you can check out a little bit about me at votepaulschistler.com. But I wanted to tell you a little bit about me this evening while I'm running. I think I can hit the ground running on the biggest issue facing this community, which is the cost of a home. For the entire range of incomes that we have in our community, there needs to be accessible and affordable homes for everyone. Homelessness is a housing problem. Recruiting and retaining employees is a housing affordability problem. Everything's connected actually to having basic human needs met. A home to be safe in, food, clean air, most of the time, clean water, thanks to the city of Bellingham. We rely on those things. And it ought to be true that a home is part of the infrastructure, too, so that we can have people who work here, fording to live here, and not driving in from some poorly placed. I don't have to do that. We've been doing it here in Bellingham. We can do better. I was there when the Bellingham Home Fund was first proposed in 2011 and went to the ballot in 2012, thanks to Seth Fleetwood and a few people on the council at that time, the mayor at that time, didn't oppose it. But we got that passed by over 50% of the vote, 57 of 56%. And then we put it on the ballot again in 2018 and we, the community, put it on the ballot and it passed. So the Bellingham Home Fund is for a lot of services. I should slow down a little. Services and bricks and mortar projects. And we can do more of both with other non-local matching funds that are now available more than ever from the state of Washington. But only if we have programs and projects ready to go here. My bias is in favor of permanent residency or owner occupancy or resident ownership, co-ownership, so people can get a little bit of the upside from paying all the bills. I think we can have better tenant protections. I was there when we had 7-0 voted to City Council for rental registration and safety inspections, but it wasn't as strong as we had proposed. And there are improvements we can make there. There's other funding we can tap into to do more bricks and mortar projects. And I see it from one direction as an economic development. Think of all the jobs in construction, building homes that stay affordable permanently, both homes for rent, but more homes for homeownership. So people can have a steak and sit if they want and have the upside, not being relegated to renting for life. So I'll hit the ground running. I don't need to be trained up on housing affordability. I could talk about it all evening, but I see my time is up. So maybe during the questions, I can answer a bit. Thank you.
Thank you all of us. Just one woman, Graham Misslunda, and she came from another event. And she will Chris down. Sorry, you can do it over here. We're trying to keep up.
Yes.
All right. Musical chairs. Go ahead. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Russ Whitney and I'm running for Bellingham City Council at large again. That's right, I said again. Two years ago, I ran for the same seat. They say things are twice as nice the second time around. It's a pleasure to see all of you again. I got a least start two years ago. I didn't understand politics because I was clearly a politician. But I'm ahead of the curve this time. I've learned a few things along the way. I'm currently endorsed by Labor Union Local 292 and the Lockton Commercial Fisher. They're counting on me to lead on just transitional legislation. And I won't let them or our community down. I've been doing the work in Bellingham for over 40 years, actually since before the work was even a thing. I'm the candidate who would have brought away volunteer and community service, worked over such a long period of time here in Bellingham, from racial justice work in the 1980s, meeting with police chiefs to develop relationships because I was being stopped for driving while riding. To my work with the Racial Justice Coalition to help what we call the Birchwood Food Desert Fighters in my neighborhood of Birchwood. So nobody can say I'm a one-trick pony. I've got a lot of variety to me. As an accountant and financial manager, I believe my broad skills and set of risk management for distributed responsibility may be the candidate and the exact person that we need on City Council at this time. In our last point of session, the city of Bellingham increased their general fund balance by $40 million between December of 2022 and January of 2023, which I understood was a software issue. The way I look at it, this is money that was not being spent on services that we need and expect from our city. This is why we need someone on City Council that understands finances. So I hope to bring your vote and I look forward to working with all of you in the future. My way of solving problems is through building relationships. That's why from my 40 years' experience here, I've worked with organizations, like Culture Community Land Trust, to get matching parts for affordable housing, to volunteering on a quasi-judicial review board, which we call the Lockton County Board of Equalization. And my relationships have always inspired me to run for City Council again. I truly believe it's my calling. My latest volunteer service has been as a planning commissioner at Bellingham Planning Commission, current. I've been an advocate for trying to get affordable housing out of our developers when they seek something like parking reductions or density increases. I'm endorsed by City Councilor Lisa Anderson, County Councilor Kelee Galloway, former mayors Dan Pike and Mark Atherson, and former City Councilors Louise Bjornson and June Fuxen. I'm also endorsed by my fellow planning commissioner Scott Jones and formerly Joe Clark of the formerly Lockton Land Trust and Culture Community Land Trust. Dick Conneboy, editor of Northwest Citizen, and Dr. Jacky Foreman, fighting director for the city of Bellingham. I'm honored to have your support and I'm honored to be elected, hopefully be elected by such local leaders that we've stated before. I look forward to chatting with you and earning your vote. Thank you very much for your time.
My name is Eamon Collins. I am a high school science teacher at the Lummi Nation School. In my former career, I was an education policy advisor to members of the US Senate and House of Representatives. And I am a current board member of the Culture Community Land Trust, where I serve as treasurer and lead their advocacy efforts. I hope this is turning into another Colson fan club, media kind of. Our candidate forums have a tendency to do that. I am running against a highly qualified incumbent of the same political persuasion, which is inherently incorrect. But I think if you have to wait for an open seat to talk about ideas or suggest a change in direction, our community can't be sufficiently responsive to emerging or worsening problems. And I think right now our elected leadership is not acting quickly or boldly enough to address the worsening housing crisis. As Paul alluded to, housing is fundamental. It touches so many other issues. We know that if you're rent burdened, if you're spending more than 30% of your income on housing, you're not filling your prescriptions and you're not getting the preventative health care that you need. We know that housing directly impacts crime and an incarceration. The majority of inmates in the Lockton County Jail said that a stable place to live would have helped them stay out of jail. And they ranked that higher than mental health issues or substance abuse issues. As a teacher, I've repeatedly seen how housing insecurity impacts my students' ability to learn. Time and again, when I have a student who all of a sudden their attendance drops off or their behavior just tanks and I call mom or grandma to find out what's going on, I find out that they lost their housing. Paul said that housing is absolutely an economic development issue. Large employers and small employers, and even federal agencies, have reached out to Colson to ask how they can help us build more affordable homes because they can't attract or retain employees who can't afford to live here. And housing is a climate issue. Climate change is a global problem, but the most effective way that we can address it locally is by changing our built environment. The population of Bellingham is going to keep growing. And we can either let that spread out into suburbs or we can try to preserve the agricultural land and the wild lands that we really treasure here and allow Bellingham to become denser. According to the State Department of Commerce, Lockton County needs to build 34,000 homes in the next 20 years. That's 1,700 homes a year. 18,000 of those, or 900 every year for the next 20 years, need to be affordable for households making less than half of what the average household in our community earns. We're building nowhere close to that. Bellingham's 2018 consolidated plan identified single-family zoning and minimum lot size requirements and restrictions on impill development as barriers to affordable housing. And all of those same areas were still listed in 2023.
Good evening. My name is Hannah Stone and I am running for reelection to serve as the Ward One Representative to Bellingham City Council. I was appointed to fill a vacancy, actually, in the at-large position in 2018 when there were 24 candidates who put their names in for consideration. And then I ran for election in 2019, so now in my first term. The reasons why I'm running to continue to serve in the Bellingham City Council are certainly threefold. One is that, so I'm a parent and a child of my father who's living here in Bellingham. And I have two kids, 14 and 17. The 17-year-old just graduated from K-School and is looking to go away to school and fearful that he won't be able to move back to Bellingham. Some of the reasons highlighted, right, affordability. My mom's looking forward to retirement, but on a fixed income and concerns about how she too will be able to stay here in Bellingham with us. And so certainly as a mom, really passionate about what's happening locally here in our community. I'm also an attorney. And so with my work as an attorney, the past 18 years, I have this analytical brain that looks at everything, right? From every angle, attentions to details, because the details really matter when we're considering policy issues and how they're going to impact our community here. But as an attorney, I'm an immigration attorney, which I would say is sort of different because I'm definitely not in the work for the money. I'm in the work for service and representing members of our community who are sometimes, most of us are disenfranchised in different ways. And so making sure that as a council member, we're considering everyone in our community and how they're impacted and how to raise the community together. And so with my candidacy, sort of think of the platform as threefold, the ABCs of my candidacy. The A is for affordable housing. You've heard that, if you won't hear it repeated time and time again. The second is behavioral health. Thinking about behavioral health scenarios and really what needs to be addressed there with respect to public safety. And the third, the C, is climate action. Because as we said, that touches on everything when we think about the just transition, our environment, our future here, right? And so there's all on health and C work on the council. And so what's important to note is that we have amazing assets and resources here in our community, experts on particular issues that we depend on as council members. Because council members, they're not experts on everything, right? But you're needing to consider lots of different issues. And so we need to depend on members of our community who are experts in the different fields that come before the council. But as part of that, just thinking about all of those skill sets, right? And how, excuse me, committed I am to my values and never being afraid to make hard decisions that sometimes aren't very popular. So when it comes to the work of the council, ultimately, we have to keep in mind the community over the individual and how best to support Bellingham as we look to the future. So thank you for your time.
Good evening. I want to thank you all for spending part of this beautiful day in noise with us to participate in the democratic process. It was such a big deal. My name is Liz Darrow. I'm a candidate for Ward Three with the City Council. I am a legislative advocate with the community to community development, working on policy for the past six years at the federal, state, and local levels. I'm also the co-chair of my legislative neighborhoods association and I sit on the immigration advisory board for the city of Bellingham. And through all of those roles and as well, I'm not a one adult, I'm a teenager. I've learned so much from this community in the past 24 years. And one of the things I'm seeing in the conversations with community members, neighbors, and policymakers is that we need a bridge between the community and the people who are making decisions about budget and policy. And so participatory democracy is at the root of everything that I do already. And I'm really excited to bring that to City Council because I think that when people participate in revolving door style of governance, which means that when you bring your priorities to the people who are making decisions, they get back to you and then take that gift that you're giving them and then bring it into policy and budget decisions so that the whole community is represented. And that is really the primary focus of my campaign and that intersects with all of the issues that you've been hearing about so far. Climate change, affordable housing, worker rights, all of these wonderful ideas that so many of you have brought to me in conversations and all over the city and hearing that. People have the resource that is the intention and the imagination and then just not being able to get the response that they need from their city leaders to make those ideas into a reality. So I love election season. It's a time where we can imagine what happened to Trigeth and bring all those ideas together. And so I really respect Neighborhood Association for this vibrant league and full room. And I need to get together with your leadership and figure out how would you make the light space to be as ambitious about being involved in this process. It's really, really important. It starts block by block, this neighborhood by neighborhood. And from that, we build this small, big city that we all enjoy and deserve to have decision-making power. So thank you so much for hosting us tonight.
Good evening. My name is Dan Hamel. I am the current incumbent for the Ward Three of Bellingham City Council seat. I'm running to continue the body of work that I started my first eight years as a City Council member. I believe that Bellingham is at an inflection point right now. We have the emerging fentanyl crisis. We have a 70% increase in overdose deaths from this year to last year. We have the ongoing twin crises of homelessness paired with the lack of affordable housing for working-class families. And then we have climate change that's forcing an urgency around climate transition and adjust transition. I have an extensive track record in working on these issues. I'm a co-founder of the Law Force and Assisted Diversion Program, a co-founder of the Grace Program, the Ground Level Response and Coordinated Engagement, and the Ultimate Response Team. I started two affordable housing funds that bring in $7 million per year. I supported the grocery workers' pass or pay in the beginning of COVID. Moving forward, I'm going to continue to work with my regional and local partners to provide offerings for the fentanyl crisis. And I support Alicia Rule's Behavioral Health Crisis Center. And I support the new jail, as long as we have behavioral health services as well. I'll continue to expedite missing middle housing for working-class families. And I'll continue purchasing land in the Lake Lockton watershed. I'm endorsed by the Northwest Central Labor Council. I'm certified Democrat. I'm supported and endorsed by local 612 fire fighters, UFCW 3,000, Teamsters, the majority of Lockton-based state legislators, the majority of Lockton County Council, and the majority of Bellingham City Council, and a massive number of support. Thanks.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kim Lund and I'm a candidate for Marianne of Bellingham. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. I'm here because I deeply love this community and I suspect, because it's such a beautiful evening, that you too share this love for this special place where you live. I grew up here in Bellingham in a unique part of town. My dad drove a brown truck for UPS. And I was the first in my family to go into college. I received my degree in chemical engineering from the University of Washington. And I consider myself to be both a problem solver by nature and by training. And to me, I'm saying yes to stepping into this opportunity because it feels to me like a community that I deeply love is slightly adrift in this moment. And I worry that staying the course, that far more years of the status quo imperils our community's collective empathy bank right now. And what that puts at risk is our ability to pull levers of progressive systemic change. But I see this election as an opportunity for all of us, for all of you. It's an opportunity to reimagine and to shape our shared future together. I see a future where we have a safer and more vibrant downtown. We have small businesses that feel supported in this moment. And we have a housing continuum that has good choices for everyone, including the renters in our community. We need more urgent action in the face of our uncertain climate future. These are all the things that I want to get on. People who know much more about housing have spoken eloquently about how that is the root of so many things in our community. I serve on the board of the Lockham Million Trees Project. I want to strengthen and recommit to our urban forestry management plan right now. I want to get to work on so many issues in a way that is moving us forward with decisive action in this moment. action in this moment. My vision is for Bellingham to be safe and stable and thriving for everyone. I'm going to bring years of executive leadership to the mayor's office. I have executive leadership in both the for-profit and nonprofit communities. I began my career as an engineer at Intel Corporation. I've been a small business owner, including in the Heliotrope Hotel here in town. And I'm going to keep in my purview all of you, the citizens that are at the top of the org charge for the city of Bellingham. I'm deeply committed to community service. I served on the boards at Bridget Collins in addition to the Lockham Million Trees. I've been a planning commissioner on the Lockham County Planning Commission for the last five years. And I'm going to approach our most pressing challenges with both community, center of solutions, and I believe in compassion alongside accountability. And I'm optimistic about what we can achieve together, and need your support and invite you to join me in this effort. Thank you so much.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here. I'm certainly with and the current mayor of the city of Bellingham. It's a delight to be with all of these peoples on whom I'm going to serve in elected office, who are so committed to addressing the affordability crisis that we have in our community. We share a similar vision for the future of this town. I'm enormously hopeful about the future of Bellingham. I take exception, however, to the suggestion that we're somehow adrift. I think that's enormously unfair. I became mayor four years ago during an emergent crisis, a pandemic that altered so many things in our community, exacerbated an enormous array of social problems, all of which I had the honor, actually, in helping to address. And I'm proud of the response that we saw from city employees, from our professional staff, the city of Bellingham. There was the pandemic response, standing up, unified command, all of that work. It was immensely intense. Crisis bonded, as they say, an enormous number of leaders in this community in our response to it, and I'm proud of the work that we did. There was the summer of 2020, George Floyd, and the social unrest, the racial justice protests that emerged. There was the housing crisis, and I was the one who had to administer our way through all of those things. And I think that we did it well. I've got four years of administering the city of Bellingham through one of the most difficult periods in our city's history. And despite all of the efforts and challenges we had, we're doing really well. We're coming out of it as some exceptional leadership team. I'm the responsible for appointing upwards of 80% of department heads in the city of Bellingham. We work really well together. We talk things out, we communicate, we listen, we problem solve, we find problems, and then we resource them and implement them. And towards that end, we're doing all sorts of impressive work in this community. We're working on triple emergency shelter at my direction in the city of Bellingham in the last three years. We're staffing up at a much quicker rate than anticipated because of effort amongst my staffer, police chief, in fact, in all of the areas. We're staffing at a much quicker rate. We've done the important work of creating a racial equity commission in response to the summer of 2020. And we're going to be standing that up soon in the process of looking for a person to oversee the process of directing that effort. I've established the first office of climate in the city of Bellingham, and we're resourcing that with more staff, and we'll be asking for additional staff at the by. I'm endorsed by a array of people, Congressman Rick Larson, Executive Sado, Todd Donovan, President of the Work for Mission, Michael Shepherd, Dan Hamon, the City Council, Holly Hatman, Skip Williams, and more. So thank you so much. I see that I'm running out of time. I look forward to addressing you on other topics soon. Thank you.
Hello, and thank you all for being here. And for those of you that have served on the city government, I have thanked and commended you for the work that you did do during COVID. I don't think anybody wanted to have to be in a leadership position during such an unprecedented crisis. And so there were not a lot of right answers, and I think that our city has remained strong through that. And I also see that it has been tasked with a set of very unique problems. And so I've lived in this town since I was nine years old. Back in 1997, I moved from rural Colorado to beautiful Bellingham with my family. And I really was naturally drawn towards leadership, starting in middle school, actually. I was part of the steering committee for the grand reopening of Bellingham High School. So that was kind of the beginning of this sort of calling towards leadership for me as I moved up through and graduated from pretty much all the college institutions in town, Lockham Community College and Western as well. I took leadership positions there, and then quickly after, actually during college, my father passed away at a young age, and then right after college, my mother developed early onset Alzheimer's, which somehow kind of spun me and drew me into a small business that, over a few years, turned into a much larger business and a national and international business. So I've been a business owner in downtown Bellingham, Washington, of several businesses, and employed hundreds of local Bellingham residents. And this is something that's given me a truly unique perspective, an ability to see and cultivate community from a very executive lens. And something that I think is really important in considering who will be the best mayor for this town is those that have both that perspective but also the executive experience, because it's much less a political position than it is actually an executive management position. And so as part of my rising as a business owner, I got continuing education through the Small Business Administration, through the Emergent Leadership Programs in 2018. That was in Seattle, a nine-month program, as well as in 2019, I was a part of and referred to by a county council member, to the Golden Sacks, 10,000 Small Business Owners Executive Leadership Program there. And in that, I was able to really take control and learn some of the deeper facets of all the different departments of running a really highly effective and very culturally optimized organization. And so I've done that with the businesses that I've run. I do see that there's some very excruciating problems in our community. And so the platform and the way I tend to address the problems, I've been really focusing on housing for all, including, starting with homeless people that are leading to a lot of the issues of public safety issues, drug use, crime, things that are affecting all of us more every day, as well as middle and low-income housing, which is incredibly important. So expanding this overburdened town that we have, because it is so beautiful and so many people want to be here, and so really putting in practice my executive experience to both optimize and grow the city government, because Bellingham's growing, and we need that kind of leadership to do it in a way that's both cost-effective and equitable. I really appreciate your support. My team's here, and there's information in the back if you'd like to learn more about our campaign. Thank you.
I'm a proud, I'm a proud colleague. Some of you may recognize me. I've been significantly engaged here for about two decades now, as a support commissioner for eight years. And my bio is pretty deep, so I'm not going to get into it. Check out my website, thecolleagueformayor.com, or as you can go in the back. I've got a number of more background, I mean, about five points. I want to go through the real, great affordable housing, our unhoused neighbors, transportation mode shift, resiliency in the face of climate change, and placemaking, having a same-place parking last. I have five plans, or five points to my plan, all paid for, all actionable, and we can do these right away. They're aspirational, but they're paid for. Affordable housing, we have affordable housing problems here. We have subsidized housing at the low end, we have subsidized market rate housing in the other end, but our workforce housing, we're missing a big piece there. I'm going to do something that I did when I was in the Board of Bellingham. I want to issue revenue bonds. I want to build public housing with revenue bonds, where the rentals pay for the bond. It's been done by force across the state. I've done it on a support commissioner. I'm going to do that through the city of Bellingham. It's already available nationwide, we just haven't done it. Our unhoused population, we have people living in tents, we have people living in the woods, we have people sleeping on the streets. In the last four years, we put up 75 only, 75 micro homes in three different villages around the city. In my first week, I'm going to order 50 of them in the first month I'm going to have installed. Here in Spadown, we're going to get people out of the tanks, out of the woods, and into safe, healthy, humane shelter, put in a better life. Transportation mode shift, we have climate goals, right? We're spending a lot of time, a lot of money on our climate change problem. We have a mode shift problem. Mode shift, that's where we get people out of their cars or to do something else. Micro mobility, remember that, we'll be hearing it from the more micro mobility. There are so many ways to be around our community that is not in an automobile, but we're not working hard enough on our mode shift. I will be putting together a micro mobility department within our public works. We're going to take our bike tent committee, we're going to take it apart, and we're going to create a micro mobility department, because we need that mode shift right away. We're going to hit our climate change goals sooner than we expect right now. Resiliency in the face of climate change, that's a big one, right? We're doing a lot. I'm a building designer. Every day, I deal with energy issues. It's what I have to do for work. I know how hard it is for us to manage these big issues. Well, one small fish in a really big pond around the world, right? The climate's going to change. Our next big challenge isn't how to make our offices, our buildings, our homes more efficient, it's how to respond to the climate change that's coming. And that's, I mean, quickly, because I have a few things inside, it's placemaking. Placemaking is a big deal. We're getting building, we're requiring it, just like the state of Washington. As our neighborhoods change, we need little things done across our neighborhoods, so they don't feel like a different city than they might be originally going to be here. My colleague for mayor.com, take with my permission to battle Bradley, Mayor, and Tarko.
All right, thank you, everybody. Real quick, we're going to go back over to the at-large position before we move on to the county executive. But real quick, if anyone does need to use the restroom, just out the doors to the right, and then another right, once you get almost to the large rooms down the hall. And you're welcome to, of course, go anywhere. There will be no breaks tonight.
Hi, everyone. I'm going to remind you, I refer to my notes. It's nice to see you all this evening. My name is Mike Robbins, and I am running for Bellingham's the council at-large position. I agree with the over two decades of work experience in lots of different kinds of jobs, blue collar and white collar jobs, some of which I held while supporting myself through undergraduate and graduate degrees. As your council member, I support efforts to increase affordable housing, and I will work with local and state lawmakers and housing experts to get that done, to ensure that we're building new housing that low-income people can actually realistically afford. I will push to ensure that we implement our climate plans, but that we do so in ways that will uplift, rather than adversely impact our tribes, our low-income folks, our bi-coast communities, making sure that that impact is borne by everyone and not adversely on low-income people. I also want to make sure that we're attending to our tree canopy, because trees are nature's a seed, and they are also our help air filtration, and they give our lives better. I'll build on the work that's already been done in terms of plans for sustainable energy use in our transportation systems. We've done actually a pretty amazing job of that so far here, and I'll continue to advocate for more creative ways to help encourage people to use that public transportation, so that we're pushing that direction steadily. I'll be advocating for more bike ability in Bellingham, so that people feel safe getting out and on their bikes and commuting and taking longer rides. Also, I'll be advocating for safe places to park our bikes, because it's great when we can bike so well, but it's not so great when we don't have a place to park those bikes. Well, I'll definitely be advocating for people whose voices are underrepresented in our city government, so that's low-income people, renters, poor folks, people of color, and immigrants. I will also have an open mind. Having lived in multiple nations and negotiating learning new cultures and languages, I know how to keep an open mind and heart, and how to listen, and how to gather all the perspectives. And so I will certainly bring that willingness to this position in city council. I'm excited to get to work, and I will be holding some more gatherings over the next couple of weeks to get to know folks more and hopefully get involved, and who will come meet with me, share your stories with me, come out and outdoors with me if you're called to do so. Right now, LGBTQ people all over the nation are facing a lot of threats, and one of the things that I want folks to know is that I am rallying the courage to promise an openly LGBTQ candidate in our city. And that takes a lot, and I would love for folks to join me in the pride parade if you would like to and celebrate this candidate all in there. My website, you know, goes on the back end, but I'd love for you to hear more about my life there.
All right, thank you, city candidates. Now on to the county executive.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Dan Purdy, and I'm a candidate for Lockham County Executive. As you're voting, primary and general election, I ask you to ask yourself one question. Who do you trust to run the county government? The executive branch of government is an enormous responsibility. It supervises numerous offices, such as the county treasurer, the assessor, the auditor, the prosecuting attorney, the sheriff's office, the administrative offices, and so on. It's a $271 million budget for 230-some thousand residents and visitors here to Lockham County. Who would you trust to do that? I'm treating this as a CEO interview, so let me tell you a little bit more about me. I've met many of you, and I thank you for being here tonight, but there's others that may not know me. I've lived in Lockham County for 13 years with my wife Allison and our three teenagers. I was born and raised in Philadelphia, and that's where Americans started, of course. And gradually made my way west towards Michigan, Colorado, Arizona, and now Washington State. We enjoy snow skiing at Mount Baker, paddle boarding at Tamiami, biking on Galm River, and rooting for the Bellingham Bells. I had a horrible golf game, so please don't ask me about that at home, Steve. I'm a seasoned entrepreneur, a management consultant, a published author, and a lean professional with over 25 years of experience working in Fortune 500 companies, mid-sized companies, and startups. I've worked for behemoths like Hewlett-Packard, Agilent Technologies, BP, Freeport, Corin, Copper and Gold, and even APCom. I've had four ventures and two exits, and I've fallen into a wonderful role now as the director of partnerships for an INC 5000 company. I'm responsible for the Pacific Northwest and for Western Canada, and we simply gift our services to founders and owners, business entrepreneurs, and we gift them our time and advisory services. I hold a Masters of Business Administration from Colorado State University. I'm a Lean Six Sigma Black Belt, which will help me with the efficiencies and the various things that we need to do inside of the county government. And I'm here to listen, to learn, and to serve you. We have a long way to go, and these wonderful candidates identify a lot of those issues, but I'm here to help you and serve you. With those qualifications and with that experience, who would you trust to run the county government? Thank you.
Well, good evening, everybody. I'm Barry Buchanan, and I am running for Lockham County Executive. First of all, I'd like to thank Scott, the board, and Neighborhood Association, and Hillcrest for being so welcoming to us tonight. It's really awesome. I am a fourth-generation Lockham County product. My wife and I were fortunate enough to celebrate our 50th wedding anniversary. We could go this Friday. We have three great grown kids that have made their way in life very successfully, and very proud of us. I'm running for Lockham County Executive because I want to bring the breadth and depth of my leadership experience into the executive's office. I am currently the chair of the Lockham County Council, and I'm in my third term of the Lockham County Council. Just some examples of that leadership. I've been elected five times to serve as the chair of the Lockham County Council, which I am currently the chair, all my partisan votes. I was the avionics supervisor when I was in the Navy of a I was the avionics supervisor when I was in the Navy of a squadron organizational avionics shop that repaired airborne electronic systems. When we got out of the Navy, I went to work for Lockheed in Sunnydale, California, and I became a lead engineer on projects like the Hubble Telescope, numerous space shoveler NASA programs, and then moved over to the Navy side and worked on the Trident submarine program. We moved home in 89 to take care of my father-in-law, and I continued my leadership roles by getting elected to the Waukesha County Democrats as chair three times. I was elected to the Billingham City Council in 2007, and my second year on the council, I was elected president of the council. So leadership is that my forte. I have brought that to the county council through the, you can just look at some of the justice project that we just introduced in ordinance to this last Monday. It was a very long process that took a lot of very strenuous detail, leadership and big-picture leadership, and I'm able to do both of those things. I'm able to manage the minutia and the larger picture. So those are a lot of my skills. I love county government. I love being able to look around and see the work that we do in front of us. I hope that you'll support me in this race. You can go to electbarry.com to read more about everything that we stand for, and I'm really looking forward to those two questions. So thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Hello, everybody. My name is Alicia Rule. I'm currently serving as your state representative in the 42nd district. So this is just south of that. The current district that I serve is about half of Billingham, including some of downtown and north. So this is a new election coming with you, and I am very honored to be here with you. What it is not is a new territory for me because I have a business right near town on the street. My youngest son was baptized at the church up the street over here, and my three children went to the Billingham Family Partnership right up the hill, you know, for most of their younger years. So we have been in your community in various ways, but this will be a new opportunity to serve you at the county executive level. I am fifth generation, and my family would be here, but that's not as important because what's important is whether you're fifth generation or brand-new. We want you to feel that you belong, that you have an opportunity to thrive, and that your family can be safe in your neighborhood, and that you can enjoy the beautiful nature that we are all missing out on tonight. So thank you for your dedication to being here. My background is in behavioral health. I have mental health for children, youth, and families, small business here that I've grown from the ground up only because of the beautiful work that my staff does. At this point, I am so proud of the impact they've made in our community because what I'm starting to hear is not only small clients who will follow us in a parade and say, hey, you made a difference in my life, do you remember me? But we're hearing conversation change on the playground to say, hey, I learned this from my friend who went to Rural Associates and learned some new skills on how to solve this problem. So that kind of problem-solving and working together, building community, is what I've been doing my whole professional life. I do have the executive experience needed for this position, but I also have the experience in government. I first ran for office on the Blaine City Council at a very local level because the other parents on the side of the baseball field had the same problems over and over and over. And when they talked about it, I said, who's your city councilperson as a new person coming back home from Boulder? And they said, I don't know. So we got engaged, I knocked on doors, and I heard from people in the same way that I will do here with you, to understand what's important to you and to represent you at the county level this time. My social work background allows me to look at systems and how they can work together. We have a behavioral health crisis and a homelessness crisis that cannot be ignored and must be put at the absolute center of our concerns. We have children as young as five dying of fentanyl overdoses. We have people living in cardboard boxes on our own streets, and my children don't feel safe to be able to go from their baseball game over to the grocery store to get some pizza afterward. We need comprehensive solutions. We need the expertise of a social worker in this moment, and we need somebody who has the energy and ambition to get this done quickly. Thank you for your support again, Alicia Rule. VoteAliciarule.com. Thank you.
Hi. Good evening, everybody. Today, I'm here as a candidate, not as a county executive. And I hope to complete my first term very successfully and run it for reelection. I've served on the council for five years prior to becoming the county executive. I'm not voting with the details on my resume, but please check off my website. I want to talk about the stuff I did when I was county executive and I was only council. I managed extraordinary challenges of global pandemic, oil trade derailment, devastating floods, child care crisis, public safety crisis, low-income housing, drugs, fentanyl crisis. All these happened during when I was county executive for like two months, and I had to face the pandemic. Nobody knew what to do. But you would never see in any paper in Waukesha County which said, oh, county executive is confused, he doesn't know what to do. I exactly knew what to do because I am a consensus builder. When emergency happened, several mayors, county executives, and sheriffs become the emergency council, and I'm thinking of that all the time. We had nine zero decisions for three years when I went to the county council with a nine-year decision from all different people. Hence, everybody is not a Democrat, you know, of the mayors, but I was able to work with them that what is good for our community, that is good for us. My governing model is what binds us together is much stronger than what divides us. So I'm a full rights holder. I'm an engineer with an MBA. I worked in large companies for four years. I've managed projects in companies with 200, 500 employees. So this is my own skill to work as administrator of a county. I'm very proud to be the first generation living in Waukesha County. And I came from India with $5, with three degrees. And I am the person who's trauma-informed and lived experience because I was a minority in India, I have lived as a minority in this country. I grew up in poverty, I understand the issues families go through these times. And during the George Floyd murder, I was able to work with Vera Fleetwood and establish a racial faculty commission. I have received a lot of endorsements, you can check them out. I have very little time. I just want to say that since 2008, I got into this political field. I have helped every candidate, every candidate to build their election. I raised thousands of dollars for the party and every candidate and worked on their campaigns. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, everybody. We are right on schedule. If anyone does need to stretch, stand up, go ahead and do that anytime. I know it's really tough to sit here until tomorrow on the same day. Go ahead and do that if you would like to right now while I introduce the board of Southville Neighborhood Association. I want to thank Tristan. Tristan Speth is here tonight, and he's holding these colored pages that are keeping these candidates on schedule, green, yellow, and red, making sure that they keep it down to three minutes. So thank you for doing that, and thank Tristan. And we have Chris Park is here tonight, she's our treasurer. And do we have any other board members here tonight? We are pretty limited on our board members, so if you are interested, you are always welcome to email me directly at the email address you probably all got there at southvilleneighborhood.org, and we can get you on the board to go to help us guide this neighborhood forward. Also, real quick, can I get a raise of hands of who's actually from the Southville Neighborhood here tonight? And who is not from the Southville Neighborhood? Fantastic. Thank you for coming and jumping across the board to these local neighborhoods and being here because this is how it's all gets done. So we're going to start with city council, sorry, with the city races. And what I did was I had three questions made up, and they're going to be able to answer two of them. They got these questions a week ago. Hopefully, we got them, and hopefully we're able to find some answers to speak for. They're going to go for 90 seconds, and I'm going to choose two of those three questions. And I'm going to try to mix it up a little bit, switch out the order so that everyone has a chance. You'll notice that everybody is on the table, so we're trying to make it at least as balanced as possible. And so we're going to start with the city races. And I'm just going to read off the three questions, and hopefully the candidates, until it just becomes boring. Please do, I have copies of questions right here on my handout. Please do read the questions, tell the all candidates and understand what the questions are. Some of these are a little bit on the complex side, but I hope to delve into some of the opinions of these candidates. So for the city candidates, question number one is how will you help create affordable housing for low-income and workforce families, specifically non-market rate housing? Number two, what is your plan to help the downtown area and similar locations to be welcoming and saving residents and businesses? And three, what is your opinion of the metal pile at the log pond near the waterfront? Is it the right direction for the city and the waterfront? How will you lead the city and work with the port to follow past regulations and establish goals for the area? That one's a little bit focused from the Southville Neighborhood's experience due to the metal piles and the noise that flows up the hill towards us. So hopefully we'll get some information about that tonight. The county candidates are going to go through two of the three questions. Number one, has Waukesha County's population grows urban and rural? What are your primary goals and concerns? Number two, how are you ready to the county for the next disaster, whether it be a flood, earthquake, pandemic, or train fire? And three, if the jail levy passes in November, how do you make sure the taxpayers' money is well-spent? And what will you do if the jail doesn't pass? We'll go ahead and start with the mayor's candidates, and we'll go in opposite direction this time. Sorry, we'll do 90 seconds for the first question, and you're going to be able to choose whichever question you would like to answer. And then we'll go through everybody on that first question, and then we'll go through the second question, whichever question you would like to answer on that one. Do you want this? I don't want to give it up. Just read it as an intro so that people can understand.
I just got some of this from Ontario. It's some super psych on the wire. Former port commissioner, let's start with the port question. My opinion of the metal pile at the log pond? This one was a little hard for me because I spent a year and a half of my life arguing with two of the port commissioners to expand the area around the shipping terminal to make sure we had enough land to support the shipping terminal. The asset's worth about $100 million. If it goes away, you can never get it back. I worked really hard to keep it. So the issue, though, is what's happening now. And I don't know whether they anticipated, you know, that kind of thing. We did talk about that sort of activity, but you never know until it comes. They've got a very long-term contract, and they do recycling, and they recycle steel. And steel is incredibly important for our whole economy. So I think we can all agree that, you know, we like that activity, but we don't like the noise and the dust. I could go down and talk, because I've got a lot of friends down in the water, and I could go down and talk about the sea, you know, how they're affected by it. Believe it or not, the dust from the gravel area and the pump track with bike ride, that's actually worse for them than the dust that's coming off of the metal pile. I also poured the new core steel plant down in Seattle, and it's got the exact same issue that we had right here, but worse. They've got a neighborhood that surrounds their plant. They have the exact same problem, noise and dust. They managed it, we can manage it. All three port commissioners are friends of mine. I could just call them up and say, hey, let's have a meeting, let's figure out a long-term solution because this company has a long-term contract. It's very dual. We've seen a solution down in Seattle that we can fly right here and have a favor of working on work commissioners to make sure we're there.
All right, I'm going to start with question number two. What is your plan to help downtown area as a downtown business owner and similar locations to be welcoming and saving residents to residents and businesses? And I think that this is really integrated as well with the housing question, and a big part of that is making sure that we have a value system and a community-supporting resource to help people that are in need of resources as well as homes, as well as mental health and other public safety-related support services. And that's something that has really been unfortunately exacerbated by COVID, and something that I think there are definitely tangible and very actionable solutions to. A lot of it in my discovery process and finding strong allies in this community as I am on this journey to the mayor's office has been finding those organizations. And a big one, for example, would be Homes Now. They've got a great site down here in Ferre in the United Village, and I encourage you to go check it out. And it's a tiny home village, it's run by those residents, and they create community for themselves, they create friendships, they share skills, and they do a lot of things that helps bring them out of a very dark, very distraught place and finding supply, finding jobs, finding shelter. And so by being able to lean into those types of relationships and create more space for them, they're excited about finding more space, they're ready to find more space. So creating those alliances and making sure that we can hit the source of the problem that is causing these issues downtown, which is not having a safe place or a viable community for these people, and as they find homes and as they are able to not have to rely on the downtown resources that are concentrated there, they'll be able to give back to productive members of society, and that will lead to reducing crime, it will lead to a decrease in the stress on the police force, it will lead to decreased drug use, and really hitting those source issues is something I plan on applying to a lot of the problems that we're experiencing. Would you like me to, at some point, sort of be a brief statement? Fantastic. The one related to downtown. So welcome back, everybody. What is your plan to help the downtown area and similar locations to be welcoming and saving residents and businesses? So when I was born, growing up until I was 29 years old, we had a Friday Old Fashioned Downtown Billingham. In 1988, Bellis Fair came, and in the space of about four months, all of the anchor tenants left downtown dot, and a very slow process of it coming back. And in recent years, before the pandemic, the resilient uptick, there was more enthusiasm, more hope, there was a lot of evidence of progress. And then the pandemic came, and shelter in place, and the traumatic increase in a array of social problems that we all felt, and it overran the systems of care that we had in place, and there was a need for response. I can tell you, the city of Billingham, myself, was responsive. I heard from a number of people downtown, they asked to meet, and a number of things grew out of that effort, including the commitment to fund downtown security, which then led to the process of creating a master program with $100 million into that effort. I proposed recently, just a few months ago, to the council to pass a ordinance prohibiting public use of drugs, at the same time proposing that we establish a therapeutic court for mental health needs and creation of a downtown solutions group. I have the pleasure of just today, we're seeing two communications from some people that live and work in downtown saying that there's some palpable improvement in things, and that felt really good. Our most recent proposed solution was, that's 15 seconds left, right? Oh, I think it's undone. I asked our police chief to create downtown beat cops, and five days a week, we've got cops on the street, and that's also kind of welcome.
Can I get a few names? Do you have any of the other names?
I'm Kim Lund, I'm a candidate for mayor, and I'll speak to the downtown issue because it's really important to me as a lifelong resident, and I want families to be able to go to the balance and get ice cream right now, or people to feel safe to go into the bakery. I want that experience for the community that I live in. And we are taking some action right now, but we need to be doing more, and we need to act with more urgency, and those actions need to be sustained downtown. And the lack of urgency to this moment is evidenced by the 200 small local businesses that have sent on to the downtown chamber and downtown partnerships that are asking for more in this moment. We have more than 1,200 citizens in our community, 100 of which have taken the time to say, I do not feel safe navigating our downtown space. So let's listen to that, let's acknowledge, let's take that urgent action. My own bias as an engineer at Intel Corporation and leading high-performance teams is to take that action to resource teams, and I want to... take that action, to resource teams, and I want to invest in our safety professionals, our fire, our police. The fire may need to take an extraordinary risk to go against the current incumbent and endorse my candidacy, because they are having compassion fatigue on the front lines. And I hear that, I acknowledge it, and I'm going to resource it, so that we all feel safe as we're navigating our community, while focusing on how do we bring back a long-term economic vibrancy and economic plans in downtown, so we can move forward and realize the community we all want to live in. Thanks.
Scott, just keep going on this record.
Okay. Obviously, kind of the downtown side as well. So I was at the Opeoia Land Trust Summit for the past two days, with three hundred other stakeholders and a bunch of officials, many of other people there on stage for a day. And we have a crisis with fentanyl, and we see in the inner downtown core, you see people using, there's a video from Ballers that got twenty-seven thousand hits, where a person was smoking fentanyl in the doorway. So that's just not acceptable. So I support the mayor's investment of one million dollars in safety for the downtown core, that includes the contract that ours uses here. I support expanding that contract. I think the ambassador program is great. The downtown foot patrols are now possible, because officers are willing to work overtime to work those shifts. I support bringing even more of that to downtown, that's what we've been hearing from people who go and travel to downtown, that they want to see more officers, and I support the bike hop program, bringing that back as well. Thank you.
My name is Liz Darrow, and I'm a candidate for Board of Supervision for the City of Bellingham. I'm going to address question number three first, and that question is, what is your opinion of the metal pile at the block pond near the waterfront? Is it the right direction for the city and the waterfront? How will you lead the city and work with the port to follow past regulations and establish goals for the area? And I want to address that question because it was brought to me by this neighborhood, some folks who have been working really hard in the Neighborhood Association to try and get some traction with the city council and some regulations that already exist. And prior to that, I didn't know about it, but I've learned a lot, and I'm appreciative for that, those neighbors taking the time to try to educate the home issue. So the city and the port can work together, they are stated partners in many of the efforts to redevelop the waterfront. The plan for the waterfront didn't have ABC metal recycling as part of it initially. The zoning in that space is for log and rock coming in and out. So the issue, as Michael stated earlier, is the noise and the dust. I think nobody doesn't want metal to be recycled. I think we need to do it in a way that respects the neighbors and also follows the noise ordinance that we have in place. So having metal scraping all night long for every night for six weeks in a row is just not good for our neighbors, and especially when we have an affordable housing project happening right down at the waterfront. And so what I'd like to do as a city councilperson is change the code for that space to match what is being done there, which would impose the dust, and it would require the noise stop at seven p.m. I think that would really help, and neighbors want to support that project. I also want to mention quickly that ABC Recycling owns a property on Birchwood Neighborhood, where metal shredding is set to begin. So I think this is another example of neighborhoods not being involved in the things that are going to go on until it's too late, and so I want to address that, please, and thank you.
Thank you. So again, Hannah Stone, running for in the Ward One, Representative Position with Bellingham City Council. I'm going to switch it up and address question number one, which is, how will you help create affordable housing for low-income and workforce families, specifically non-market rate housing? So obviously, this is a hot topic. The legislature recently passed a House Bill eleven-ten, which is addressing adding missing metal housing, and House Bill thirteen-thirty-seven, which is addressing the addition of ADUs right on properties, certainly needing to increase the, just the number of units that we have available in the city is critically important. Beyond that, we've looked in the past at, you know, incentives for developers as well as bonuses to try and encourage the development of permanently affordable housing, and that hasn't really happened for a number of reasons, partly because of the market. And so the city was looking at the development of inclusionary zoning, right, where mandatory, well, could be mandatory or voluntary, if you're proposing that it'd be mandatory, that there are a certain number of units incorporated into developments, so in addition to market rate, there's a mandatory number of affordable housing units built at the same time. And to do that work, ideally, there would be partnerships, right, between the city and private developers, as well as, you know, nonprofits like Culture Community Land Trust and others, who are experts about affordable housing, permanently affordable housing, experts in development, as well as lenders of permitting, all working together. In addition, Alex Ramal, representative for the Ford, has brought forward a bill regarding rent control. So as some of you may know, rent control is illegal currently in the state of Washington, so really you need to change that, because some things within the market just aren't serving or pricing out. Renters, right now, we have, you know, over fifty percent of our community is renters. So thank you.
I'll speak to question number one, too. My name is Aiman Collins. How will you create affordable housing for low-income and workforce families, specifically non-market rate housing? I think in our community, the demand for affordable housing is very clear there. The expertise on how to deliver affordable housing, I think, is there as well. There's a lot of organizations with decades of experience creating affordable homes. What isn't there is the systems and structures to make that easy, or funding resources in the right places. The two bottlenecks that I think exist for creating more affordable housing in downtown is, first, regulatory barriers. I understand the hesitance to let for-profit developers just run the aisle, but I don't understand why we maintain minimum lot size requirements and density limits for permanently affordable homes that would serve families of this generation and many to come. Organizations like Recultion that are now developing affordable homes are trying to do that with very large, complex projects with a very small staff, and a relatively modest investment by the city to help organizations like Recultion hire project managers to oversee these developments would go a long way in growing the development capacity of these groups and putting a lot more affordable homes in the pipeline.
Russ Woodley, running for City Council at large. I'll take question number one as well. How will you help to create affordable housing for low-income and workforce families, specifically non-market rate housing? I think we need a three-legged approach here. First off, we need to bring back the Public Development Authority, or affectionately known as PDA, so that we can build housing without having a profit involved. The student is felt in using our public dollars more effectively, and still returning the buildings to the tax rolls, so they do contribute to our tax base. Now, PDA can also ensure that we require union jobs and good-paying benefits when using public dollars to ensure affordability is attached to the building in perpetuity. This is a lot of mixing of market rate, affordable housing, and this is the most, I think, successful one. The second one, I would say, is this, I'm looking at the stool here, we also need to increase support for land trust models of affordable housing ownership. This is what I'd like to call the equity squared model. It increases equity for historically inactive marginalized groups, but it also helps them to build equity in their residences. As a financial manager, I love this idea of equity squared. Thirdly, and lastly, we need to pass legislation that requires our developers to build affordable housing, either through inclusionary zoning, legislation that requires affordable indoor workforce housing, or through utilization of legislation policies that attach affordable housing requirements with developers' up zones, parking reductions, or other benefits that reduce their living costs. Thank you very much.
My name is Paul Schessler, running for Bellingham City Council at large, with these four other fine people. I think I know more about housing affordability than probably anyone in my race, and maybe anyone on the stage, and I can test that by seeing if anyone knows about housing that can be funded by real estate excise tax, and why we don't have that here yet. There is other funding we can bring to bear on the problem locally, and some of it is non-local funding. Culture Community Land Trust was mentioned a number of times, it was, me and two of my best friends got the Culture Community Land Trust started in nineteen ninety-nine, and I got to be its head director for ten years, so I learned a lot about housing affordability, and especially about non-organicized homes. We do need to scale that up, but standing up a PDA is probably going to take several years and a lot of money, when there are organizations now, nonprofit developers and the housing authority, public agency, that is very eager to do more. So there are two things we could do immediately with money that's sitting around unused, I think, and that is to buy land, whatever is available, at suitable locations for homes that are not market price. Because if we wait for the market price developers to do it, they just can't. They can't afford to build something and then rent or sell it for an affordable price for average working people, median income and above even, but especially anyone below median income, cannot afford a new apartment based, it's not affordable. So what we have to do is acquire land and then make it available for partnerships with neighborhood-led development, nonprofits pending up, contracting with the for-profits, it is a for-profit deal. All this money, the twenty million dollars for sixty-unit apartment building, goes to the for-profit builders and suppliers and engineers in our context. It's a good system, it's an economic development solution. Homes for sale, oh, is that fine, not fifteen seconds? So I could talk about that. I invite you all to check me out at paulschessler.com, you can get a call me through that website, and I'd be delighted to talk to you for any time. Thanks.
Hi, I'm Morales, also running for City Council. I really actually appreciate Paul's work a lot. I, in the last legislative session, was a hired organizer with the Washington Long Income Housing Alliance, and actually did some advocacy on that big bill. We did it together across the finish line, and also did advocacy on the rent stabilization, not rent control, bill. Both things we desperately need, and also going to answer the housing question and go into similar route, but a few more things to add. So some of the steps in order to expand affordable housing are already in place. We have a mandate from our state legislator to build, this legislature gives me to build more affordable housing. We have zoning and planning discussions underway at the city level already, to get us into alignment with the new ADU law, and to use some of the funding that came into our state budgets. I did a bunch of advocacy this past session as well to get us a historic, hope get us a, single-handedly, budget investments for long-income housing in our housing trust fund, housing essential needs. And so we do have money to use, and we need to creatively use it. The other thing I think is kind of important is that we need to come to agreement as a community, that this is what we have to do. I think that we need to put as much effort into talking about that need for affordable housing and agreeing upon it, as we are willing to put into manufacturing consent for a new car rental facility. I think we all need to really, really commit to getting everyone housed, and that does have to be something we all believe in. Looks like I have fifteen more seconds. Ten, okay. So I really just, I want to see us get there, I think we need to do creative solutions. I am definitely, as a city council member, very interested in pursuing the land trust route. I think we can do really creative things with community-owned land trusts, and, sorry, publicly-owned land trusts also.
Hi, I'm Jared O'Brien, City Council at large position. I think I'd like to address question number two, which is, what is your plan to help the downtown area to be welcoming and saving to residents and businesses? I think what's implied in that question is that there's certain behavioral issues that we see downtown that are affecting people's perception of safety. And if I was to summarize the theme of what my participation on the City Council would be, would be accountability. And what I mean by that is, when we see behavior in our streets that are destructive to our community and destructive to the individuals that are participating, that we're going to be accountable to each other and ask those individuals to be accountable, too. And I'd also like to recognize that our resources are scarce, our financial resources are scarce, and we need to be good stewards of how we use that money. There's been a lot of talk about our Bellingham Home Fund. In two thousand and eighteen, I served on the Bellingham Home Fund Review Board, where we, and I had a group of others, we looked at how that money was going to be spent. And one thing that I saw that was really lacking was the management plans by our partner agencies. And eighty percent of the calls that we get downtown are from twenty percent of the people. A lot of issues around Twenty-Two North, there's a lot of issues around Francis Place, and behavioral issues coming from there, and those agencies are understaffed. So when we're, when we are signing contracts with those partner agencies, I think it's really important that they have an adequate management plan, how they're going to staff those facilities, and how they're going to monitor the conduct of their guests. Thank you.
Again, my name is Chase Patton, and I'm running for the at-large position. I'm also going to answer question number two. I really love downtown, and there's so much vibrancy there that I also just wanted to acknowledge, as we talked about some serious problems. You know, I have experiences of how I've faced a worker, and seen violence, and seen the toll that I can take. I also work downtown, live downtown, and so this issue is close to heart. And I think we need to be really laser-focused on some upcoming opportunities. Because of the recent state legislative session, sixty million dollars will be going to local governments, but we need to be really focused on investing quickly and wisely into treatment and other, you know, evidence-based solutions, so we can give people lots of options for healing and housing. I think we also need to realize that there's a chance a big jail ballot measure will pass this fall that's going to raise a lot of money, forty percent of which will go to the cities, and it's my commitment that that be invested in accordance with the well-established priorities of our community, which are evidence-based solutions that are upstream, and are really going to work to get a long-term handle on these problems. So short-term interventions are really important, but I just wanted to shout out there's long-term opportunities.
Good job.
Thank you to the city, and now with that, I'll go to county, and we'll go in for sort of a...
Well, what's the game? I will answer the first question, what can county's population grow, and what my concerns, and what I'm going to do about that. I have three, I have many, but I'll talk about three. First thing, we are running out of land for human habitat. We need a solution for water security for salmon, we need to save hundred thousand acres of agriculture land, and public safety, and fentanyl, and mental health behavioral crisis. These are the three top areas with title, what have I done about this? Just fill in and change new UGAs is not enough. I do not want to see payment in rural areas. We, as a community, must find a solution to human habitat growth. I have taken city steps on land use policies, and these results are so slow that they won't show up like tomorrow. When you change a land use policy, it takes a while, you take impact, and then you see that, oh, there's more housing, so you have to have patience about that. Water security, fifty years, no politician wanted to touch this, because it was a lose-lose situation, nobody wanted to talk about water, and we were running into crisis. I promised in twenty nineteen I'll talk about water. I did, I have brought parties together, at least they are talking to each other. They then talk about salmon habitat, even during COVID. I have worked to, you know, a winner's point far right here, has been acquired, school company one and two, fish tank property, okay, and I will help preserve hundred thousand acres of pot land. Thank you.
Hello again, everybody. Alicia Rule, State Representative, running for County Executive.
Hello again, everybody. Alicia Rule, state representative, running for county executive. I have had the privilege and honor of serving at a state level and have been working day and night nonstop for years now to really understand deeply the issues in front of us. But none of it really matters because as I was preparing for this meeting and others this week, what matters the most is there was a man coming out of my office living in a cardboard box on the street. That is what I'm concerned about. You know, I recognize community. My child, who was blessed and magical, I got to experience all of this. Had feet in the sand. I had access to the mountains. I had all the trees. And I knew that I wanted to raise my kids in a community that was like this, where we cared about each other. We looked after one another, and I never had to question my safety. But this reality is not true for us as adults, and it's certainly not true for our next generation right now. So we need to act quickly to address those issues. They are overlaying issues. There's not just one issue. There are overlaying issues. But we cannot ignore the fentanyl crisis. And we're calling it the fentanyl crisis, but I'm here to tell you it's also very quickly the trank crisis. If you haven't yet heard, this means that people are very unhealthy in our streets. They are not outsiders or people that we don't understand. They are our neighbors and our friends, and mostly our youth. And they're dining every day. If you talk to anybody in emergency services, teachers, schools, anybody who's on the front lines of any of this work, they will tell you they are tired and they need more support. I brought back multiple projects that I will tell you about, but I'm finishing up here. The funding is there. It's on its way. The pipeline is there. The operational pipeline is there. But we need implementation, and that implementation is what I've been doing my whole life. I've been working for this moment because it is where my passion lies, and I look forward to doing that for you as county executive. Thank you.
Hello again. Mary Buchanan, running for Lockham County Executive, current council chair. I think question number one, as Lockham County's population grows, urban and rural, what are your primary goals and concerns? And I'll say my number one concern is climate change. We need to double down on our work on climate change. We passed a resolution to, for the work we're going to do on our 2025 Coniference Plan update, and it's going to have a very focused lens on climate change. Housing is another big one. Lockham County needs to do our part. We need bold leadership that can put together something like Bellingham has done with the Home Fund. We need to do our community engagement process to be able to do that, but we need a Lockham County Home Fund as well. And I think the other thing is public safety. That's what I've been working on on this jail proposal, the justice project. We found a trifecta between criminality, homelessness and housing, and behavioral health and substance use. I sit on the board of the North Town Behavioral Health ASO, and I'm really looking forward to, we're hiring a new executive director, and we really want to get our workforce up and running better. We have just a shortage of people in the behavioral health field and the substance use treatment. So there's just so much work to do, but we have to be bold. We have to step up to the plate and really swing the bat.
Dan Purdy, introduce me at danpurdy.com. I chose question number one, as Lockham County's population grows, urban and rural, what are your primary goals and concerns? My primary goals include threefold. Proper balance between growth and agriculture. We have 100,000 acres of ag land, roughly thirty percent into the berries. Number two is creating an affordable housing option for families without taking away from the ag land. And then finally, addressing the additional challenges of public safety and mental health. Those two go hand in hand together. My present concerns around responsible and accountable growth. We're facing numerous challenges and ultimately some headwinds here. I've listed four. Ninety-seven is not enough time, but it's government services, public safety, permitting, and rural broadband internet, which doesn't offend you here necessarily. For government services, we need to work in conjunction with various departments to better support the community. For public safety, we need a multi-faceted approach. We require services throughout the county and support the unincorporated areas that are underserved. Everyone wants a safe neighborhood, so we want to fund the right programs with the right partners as a community to care for those in the crisis. Permitting, with growth, construction, building. We need to take a hard look at the building permitting process to determine the most productive path for affordable housing, real estate developers, and the hard-working citizen, you and me, who is frankly frustrated by the present bureaucracy. And I mentioned earlier the rural broadband internet, but that was my thought. Okay. Danpurdy.com.
Thank you, everybody. Now with question round number one. Is this format going well for everyone? Good? All right. Let's go with question number two, and once again, you have two more choices to choose from. And let's start with Dan. You can work away this way. We'll go back to Mary's, and then the executives.
Thanks. Daniel, running for city council. I'll do a question that will find you.
All right. I should invite everyone. If you have to go after the other ones, that's okay. I expected that. This video will be online, so you will be able to get these answers. Hopefully you don't need to actually do that. So let's keep going.
So this is the affordable housing for low-income and workforce families. There's a monument on the table now that wasn't there last year. The legislature passed the largest investment of the state housing trust fund in Washington history, $400 million that we could use on here with Bellingham. Bellingham is unique because we have the Bellingham Home Fund. Paul Schuster and I, well, who was there? Paul Schuster and I, great writer, created Bellingham Home Fund about a decade ago. And then two years ago, I led the city council in passing another affordable housing fund that's worth about $3 million. And so $7 million there. For affordable housing, we usually leverage ten times to one. So $7 million becomes $70 million that we can use for affordable housing. And because we're so even that way, I'm going to make sure that I work with our state legislators to break home those dollars for Bellingham. And then the state legislature also passed some workforce housing for working families in the last session called the Seamen's House, housing on work tax, that type of housing. People should be able to live in the same community where they work, and there's so many people that are priced out that they have to move to, you know, like in Ferndale or the unincorporated counties. So those are the things that I will be working on. Thank you.
Liz Darrow, running for city council, word three. I'm going to address question number one as well, which is, how will you create affordable housing for low-income and workforce families, specifically non-market rate housing? I agree with council member Hamel that there is a lot of money on the table. I think our council and community partners have done great work putting together things like the Home Fund. We have a lot of money in the bank, so to speak, and more than 4.5 million dollars left over from last year during the housing crisis that was unspent from that fund. And so I think we need to look realistically at development. It takes a long time. I talked with a neighbor today who told me two years of permitting to get the property that he bought in my neighborhood up and running as housing. And so while I do think that loosening up some of the code restrictions is a great idea, we need to do that. We need to give tax breaks to developers who are willing to commit to at least twenty percent permanent affordable housing. We also need to be realistic about how long that's going to take. And if this spending money that we have in the Home Fund right now, we've also got 2.6 million out of county from ARCA that is specifically earmarked for solving housesness. We've got the Economic Development Investment Program, which has $24 million sitting in it right now. So I want to mobilize that money and get people housed and keep people housed. People who are living on fixed incomes, all their property taxes go up, they need relief as well. And so the plan has to be the landscape of housing. We can't just pick one thing. We need to do a whole bunch of things to get people housed and keep them housed with the money that we've got right now.
Okay, Hannah Stone, again, form one, city council. So I'll take question two, which is the question about what is your plan to help the downtown area and similar locations to be welcoming and safe to residents and businesses? So as was mentioned earlier, some of us were at an OPIO summit being held here locally. And a lot of what resonated, right, hearing directly from community members who are either recovering addicts or have, you know, an accident past, have been sober for a long time, or in the middle, what was missing most, right, was community and connection and that sense of belonging. And especially with our youth, the concern is that youth don't have, right, outlets or those connections or positive ways to, right, engage in activities, not having community center or a team center or, you know, spaces where people can be, engage in active, productive behavior. But the issue is that you're not going to just remove people who are, you know, acting as some may say is inappropriate or unacceptable for the community downtown and somehow solve the problem, right? What's needed is actually addressing the underlying issues that are causing that behavior and the dependency on drugs, and not just the drug addiction itself or mental health issues, but those underlying needs. And so really needing to look at the entire person and the entire situation. And so that involves funding for housing and treatment programs and facilities, but also increased engagement in downtown. So if there's barriers on the ground, that includes all of us. We are all collectively responsible for the health of our downtown and our city. And so that means all of us engaging and being part of the solution. So thank you.
Eamon Collins, also running for word one. EamonCollins.com, you can spell it and find it. I want to talk about question two, what's your plan to help the downtown area? The original phrasing of the question, I think, referenced the author had an eleven-year-old child who said they're afraid to go downtown anymore because of violent altercation that they witnessed. And I think it's worth acknowledging that just observing that is traumatic. And I don't think we minimize the tragedy of the unhoused individuals being victimized living on the streets by acknowledging that it's harmful to everyone else too. It's dehumanizing for the individuals on the street. But to pretend we don't see that and to feel powerless, like we don't know what to do about that. Kim talked about a well of Henry P., if I got that phrase right, that runs dry. I think that's really damaging to our social fabric. When I've talked to homelessness advocates, they've talked about the need for multiple options and a spectrum of services for both adult homeless individuals and youth homeless people. We need emergency shelter, not just in the winter, but in the summer now. And we have heat domes, and we're going to have smoky days where the air is unhealthy to breathe. We need transitional housing. We need multiple tiny homesites. One thing I learned is that, you know, why do some people not seek shelter? Well, maybe there's a particular individual in that shelter. Maybe their abuser is in that particular shelter. So just having a base camp and white house mission isn't enough. We need a full spectrum of services and ease people out of homelessness and give them the healthcare and other services.
Russell Green, running for city council large. I'm going to take on question number three. All right. What is your opinion of the metal pile at the log pond near the waterfront? Is this the right direction for the city and the waterfront? How will you lead the city and work with the port to follow past regulations and establish goals for the area? First, I want to say this is not an appropriate industry to operate in our waterfront. The port has the authority over the use of the property, and it's unfortunate that there was not better communication and coordination with the mayor's office regarding this contract. I assume there was no coordination at least. Our community has spent several years, fact, decades, and substantial funding envisioned and invested in what we consider what we want our waterfront to be. It should not be a location for rusty metal to clink around all night and keep me in this alley laboring away. It's not the industry that would encourage development. I feel it's important to have a working waterfront. The port could have done a better job than piling up the metal to ship what proceeds. Minimally, the contractor should adhere to the city's quiet hours and not operate past ten o'clock in the morning or before seven in the morning. I feel we already have established goals that haven't been set for many sessions and community involvement with the noise records. I think this is a conflict, and it's an interpretation, not a good interpretation of what our pride and community should be. One area I think that we could, we want to look at, see, is if the city's noise records can be enhanced and ensure that late-hour work is not being done. I know the port has said that they want to find solutions, and I don't think it is. But if not, we need the mayor's office, the city council, put pressure on them to provide and fix the contract. If they can or won't, then the city needs to take this seriously and chart it out. Thank you.
Again, I'm Paul Schuster, running for city council large. And on this second question of what we can do downtown, I think we need to do more of what works. And there's some good things that are happening. We've heard about those. And do less of what is not working. Part of the solution is having a home for people to be in. But I really want to address the third question. What is your opinion of the metal pile at the log pond? Is this the right direction? And how will you lead the city and work with the port? I think it was the wrong decision to approve that contract. I don't know if we're stuck with it for the long term, but that company might move away. There are better ideas for something that really needs the wharf there that is such a valuable asset that we need to use it. So there were two ideas that I've heard about that I really like. One is aquaculture-related seaweed and shellfish production. And then the whole stream of sound is the market area for that. The other one, my friend Margaret Curtis, now retired civil engineer, she and I envisioned that we could be somewhere on the waterfront, probably in the Tishon Storage Warehouse, which may still be half-empty, building modular panels, and now mass timber panels, floor and wall panels using wood, it's a question of carbon, but for affordable homes. And then those can be moved over to what's now a cloud scrap. And then be shipped away like method homes built in Ferndale. Six homes that went to Lopez Island, Housing Lopez, put up six homes, the crane was on the island in one day to put these six homes on their foundations. We can do, we can do more of that kind of thing. It's not scrap. Last thing I wanted to say is why did they decide to do the scrapyard and then approve a project that is very expensive homes and an expensive hotel just adjacent to it? And they turned down the aquatic center that was proposed to the board last year, last summer. So check it out. It's in the Bellingham Herald, the Boardman Project. They could have had an aquatic center. I'm not the one proposing the aquatics, by the way. Oh, and by the way, I'm a Fairnead Neighbors Board Member and President, and so I feel for neighborhood associations. And really, neighborhood associations can get binding agreements with the city. Fairnead Neighbors nonprofit corporation has one. I think we may be one of the only in town to have a binding agreement with the port and the city.
I am Maralas. I should say my website too. It's electmayaorales.vote. I'm apparently one of the only people with a dot vote in our entire Washington system, so you should be able to find me. I actually loved the answer that Liz gave to the Southland neighborhood question around the steel pile. So I'm going to answer the community safety question. This is something that I've spent a lot of time thinking about because of my advocacy and the foundation of Washington people's privacy. And one of the things that I do is data privacy advocacy, as well as anti-surveillance advocacy in our state, locally and sometimes nationally. One of the things that I think we have already leaned into as a city are alternative response teams and community-driven safety, and I want to see a lot more of that in our city. And the reason I want to see more of that is because it respects human beings. So rather than objectifying people's pain or trauma or the fact that folks are unhoused, struggling with various things, often just hunger, not having a place to be, this kind of trauma, especially when it's compounded, is extremely disabling, and it's so important for us to meet people on a human level when it comes to safety, understanding that the safety of our kids, our safety when we're walking around downtown, it actually isn't necessarily paramount to anyone else's. So our house neighbors also have the right to safety. And so I want us to recognize that we're a connected community in that way and lean more into community safety efforts. Like Coog's programs in Portland, I don't know if you've heard of these. There's a bunch of community pilots all around the country, and I think we can emulate those. And that is how I would like to see us responding to safety in Bellingham.
O'Brien, city council large. Thanks for hanging in here. It's been a long night.
It's been a long night. I want to take question number one, just how do you help create affordable housing in low-income and workforce housing for families, specifically non-market grade housing? First of all, I'd like to say I support, I've supported our home levy, which is what we've jacked ourselves to help with low-income housing. I support our own profits. I think we have some really good non-for-profit builders. But I also think it's really important for us to acknowledge that 90% of housing activity does occur in the market-grade housing. And every time that we, when we undersupply our housing with the city demand that we have, it puts pressure on all tiers of housing, including low-income housing. And one of the things that we're going to be tasked with as a council in the next two years is updating our conference of plan. The housing chapter and our urban growth boundaries will be a big part of that. When I served on the planning commission, we had a seven to zero recommendation to city council to do a modest expansion of our urban growth area to accommodate the growth that we knew was coming, and that was turned down by the council and voted against a four-three. And I think that was a really big mistake. And now we are even further behind on all tiers of housing. So I think that's something that we really need to get right the next time in 2025 where we're going to come plan. I also would like to say I do have some cards that have some links to my website, and I have written several articles that were published that give a little more information on housing, so I'd ask that you please take ones and leave. Thank you.
Hi, again, Jason Cotton, and I'm Large City Council. I'm going to take question one. When I'm elected, I would be the only mentor on city council, and I want you just to cast your mind back, this is my first story now, to a time where you felt some economic insecurity, maybe lost a job or had a relationship on the rocks. I mean, that is our experience as mentors every single year. And so more so than ownership, what I want for our community is stability, right? And so I think there are really innovative models that are working. I think about Montgomery County, Maryland, which has a public social housing developer that uses a revolving fund that creates permanently affordable mixed-income social housing. Seattle, just by initiative, has a similar model. I think we're going to learn a lot from that implementation, and that's something I want to see brought here. When I think about what we need as a community, it's really that most of us don't have a say in our housing system, right? As tenants, I talked to this one tenant recently who wanted to weatherize her unit and was found a low-income provider and was told no by their, you know, out-of-state landlord, right? And so there are costs of this, there are costs to climate, there are costs to families and stability of families. And so I think we do really need to seek out non-market solutions as part of much broader suite of policies. And I'm really proud to endorse the group, including a lot of those at the state level, like Senator Sharon Chu made, Representative Alex Ramal, Representative Deborah K. Hoffman. I think there's more we can do to further the struggle, but as well, thank you all.
Put my eyes on, again, I'm Kim Lund, I'm a candidate for the mayor of Bellingham. I'll address question number one, which is the topic of affordable housing. And this is so critical. I have a 22-year-old daughter who graduated college two weeks ago. She does not have good options for return to community and building equity in an asset. I want city workers who go to work every day to serve all of us to be able to live in a community in which they serve. We know that we need mental health counselors, we need addiction specialists. Where are those people going to afford to live in our community as we invest and expand the social programs? So what can we do? I want to expand the capacity of our planning department. Let's hire more people. More people means we can get more projects through quickly. That is a very pragmatic approach, which will increase the housing supply across the entire continuum. I think we can look to case studies outside our community for cities that are doing this very well. Seattle, I have 35 just invested in a PDA. Dallas has an interdisciplinary team that can expedite the permitting process. And another pragmatic, really practical approach is to increase the number of pre-approved designs that builders can draw upon with confidence to build in our community locally. We can do this for ADUs, we can expand this concept out to middle housing options, such as town hall homes and courtyard cottages. And lastly, because I believe in data, let's measure our progress. Probes on the should be public, let's put a dashboard on the city website, and let's track how we're doing in our permitting. Thank you.
I'd like to use my minute to have to address the scrap metal pile at ABC Recycling. First off, I'd like to thank the South Hill Neighborhood Association for sending that thoughtful letter. Scott, if there's not material, I'd like to sit down with you and go over that, maybe with our planning director soon. It's a problem that has to be addressed. It's a complicated problem, however. I would like it or not, the reality is that the sub-area plan that was the waterfront was intended to be a working waterfront, and there were old industrial zoning that existed there that essentially remained in some areas. The planning department concluded, and I know that there's enough smart women around us, that this was an outright permitted use, that is, the ABC Recycling Company and how they're using that property. I met with Rob Fix recently to talk about this, and he had very clearly known this is an issue that has to be resolved. He expressed commitment to helping resolve it. What I can say about the reality of the situation is that that is a long-term contract. The port, I believe it's fair to say, is committed to continuing that contract, there's not a plan to try and get out of it. And there's some complexity around some of the issues, such as trying to create more appropriate hours of work. It's not simply a function of talking to ABC Recycling and saying, will you reduce the hours? They have the permission from the international warehouse, the Longshoreman Union that exists, that's headquartered in San Francisco. There's a number of parties that have to agree to do that, but he's committed to making that effort and trying to reduce very little in the work hours. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Chris McCoy, I'm a candidate for the mayor of Bellingham. I'd also like to address the number three, which is, what is your opinion of the metal pile at the log pond near the waterfront? Is this the right direction for the city of the waterfront? How will you lead the city and work with the port to follow past regulations and establish goals for the area? I think this finally illustrates a bit of an identity crisis that Bellingham has gone through. I think all of us know and understand that it has been very much a city of subdued excitement, and I think that's something that is evolving and changing, and we need to have a more unified and relevant vision for what we are all doing here. I think you can see by having this many candidates, that this is not a subdued group. I would like to thank a lot of the council members for so eloquent in speaking to the housing question, which is also a very important issue here and one I'm actually going to also address. But I do think that it's an accountability issue, I think that it's a transparency issue, and ultimately a unique leadership that is able to navigate these multilateral scenarios, something I've had to do as a business owner at the local, state, and federal level with multiple departments. And that's something that with that kind of experience, you can stand up and you can find ways to find an appropriate use for the space that is our future. And I think that here, I commend you as a neighborhood organization for standing up for that, because that's going to give us, the people that are governing this town, a little bit more ability to push back against some of these situations that will enable us to really create that vibrant and beautiful area downtown, which is a huge asset and should be something that the people of this town can really enjoy and can help bring people from all over the world to this town, which I believe is a much better economic use. Something with my background in economics, I both like to clearly substantiate and make a strong case for, as well as negotiating with ABC Recycling to move somewhere that's more appropriate. So, thank you. McCoyfrommayor.com, that's the number four, and you can get all my materials out back. Cheers.
My name is Paul Ray, I'm the mayor. I am going to, because I'm a rural person, I'm going to try to get the last two of them on line, what's your plan to help downtown in some other locations, and how I help create affordable housing. First of all, I think most important that we can do is reestablish authority. And if you've seen anything in the last few years, it's a feeling of lawlessness and people getting away with it. I'm committed to diversionary topics, plans that we've heard discussed in my epic community. So if we can push hard on that and we can reestablish authority, we can get people into, that are having a criminal crisis or medical crisis, we get them the right services and we can solve that problem. The affordable housing question, I presented that earlier, and again, it's critical that when you look at candidates, they're running for these offices, right? This is where experience matters, my civic experience, my education, and my life experience. And with respect to my, you know, fellow candidates here, my resume is much, much deeper than all of us. So when I come to you, I'm coming to you with ideas, not random thoughts. The idea is that we can do right now. For example, one idea on workforce housing, it's tried, it's true, it's paid for, and we don't compete with the housing that we already got out there. We don't compete for grants, we don't compete with the private sector, we fill in a blank that we have not yet filled in in a long time. I did both of these either. Are we not done? All right, Mike McCall, I'm the mayor, checking out, I've got a ton of ideas. I think, Kim, I think you stole one of mine, all right? Which is great, I love when another candidate is saying the same thing, right? Because we know that, we know that we get some like the greatest and great ideas I'm looking for. So, Mike McCall, thank you very much.
Go to Dan.
I missed dinner tonight, so I'm thinking, can I continue this conversation? I chose my question number two. How will you ready the county for the next disaster, whether it be a flood, earthquake, pandemic, or train fire? The executive is responsible for disaster response. In an emergency, I'll work closely with partners from the Emergency Management Division, the Sheriff's Department, all city divisions, and the county council to effectively serve all of those affected. I would like to establish a significant fund for emergency preparedness with city, with county council, as we face numerous catastrophic events. We're living on hard time with our geographic location on the eastern edge of the Ring of Fire. We have fault lines running through our county as well. I've been with John Gargat, Director for the Sheriff's Department Emergency Management Division recently, and I'm continuing to learn with horror about the challenges we face in order to even get prepared. We need to become more action-oriented versus reactionary. We require training, equipment, and drills. We need these resources before an event, as we shouldn't be dependent on state and federal resources during a catastrophic event. As we see the effects of climate change, we need a more resilient community to protect human life and preserve property. The Noxack River isn't getting any better. A recent WUSU study reported that the Noxack could rise in potential another 30% or so, leading to new flood events that will be experienced in November 2021. We also need to specially train partners in mental health trauma that's specific to disaster rescue and recovery. Thank you. DanPurdy.com, Dan Pury, 15 minutes.
Well, everybody, again, thanks for hanging in here. It's been a long night. I am Barry Buchanan, your county council chair, running for Rocket County Executive, and I chose for my second question, question number three. If the jail levy passes in November, how do you make sure the taxpayer's money is well-spent? And what will you do if the jail doesn't pass? Well, first of all, the process that went into creating the implementation plan, the needs assessment, and ultimately the ordinance was a very public-driven process that I'm very proud to have been involved in and engaging so many people throughout our county. And I think what we have to do is follow the plan. The executive has got the direct staff to follow the plan that the council just approved and make sure that we are doing those things for behavioral health and substance use disorder that the council has asked for. We have pledged to do, after four to six years, 50% of the new tax will go to those other services. It's important that we hold that plan accountable and make sure that plan is executed. The other thing, if the jail levy doesn't pass, we are in trouble. We go to some of the questions these city folks have answered, we're not going to have the capacity to have a fluid criminal justice system that can have a continuum of care. We're not going to be able to house the people that need to be housed most. We're also going to have to look for alternatives for housing and pour more bad money after good into an old jail that's really, it's a life-saving issue, it's horrible, it's just a deplorable situation. You could see a tour, if you'd like, on the Rocket County website. Again, Barry Buchanan, running for Rocket County Executive, and you can find me at electbarry.com. Thanks.
Thank you. I'm going to cheek with my notes on this time. Once again, State Representative Alicia Rule, running for county executive. We need, we need a public safety facility that needs to pass. It is inhumane, what we have right now, and ineffective. So please do take a look at what's been proposed, and please do vote for that. Regardless of that, we have lots of work to do, so I'm going to quickly tell you about the things that I was able to secure from a state level that you have not even seen yet. A 23-hour urgent care center for behavioral health, that's a seven-minute drop-off for law enforcement or a voluntary person to walk in and have a behavioral health-led facility. This is a game changer. Thank you. The Way Station, 30-day inpatient unit for complex medical care for male health and complex needs for senior citizens. A detox and wellness center at the Ammonation. We have tiny home villages, added an alternative response program, supported law enforcement mental health co-responder model, added a 988 system, added a brand-new 911 dispatch center, supported public safety, increased training for public police officers, increased mental health professional vendors in schools, and added a prime sponsor to build that offered outdoor education for all children, not just those who are wealthy. Now it's time to take those buildings, get them built quickly, efficiently, get operating in place, and implement those to deliver actual outcomes to you, the people who pay the bills, and the ones who are accountable to. So that's my plan, and that's my plan to do as your county executive. Again, Alicia Rule, that's R-U-L-E, like rule or with a R. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Just 90 seconds more. Well, I'm going to take the question number three. If GLA passes in November, make sure money is used properly, or what if it does not fail, what will you do? Let me start with the second part first. First of all, we cannot afford not to pass GLA. The reason is, it means abandoning the many people we are trying to help. Now just imagine inmates there, average stay is three months. You know, there's 70 people who work there, they have a life sentence. People have been working there 10 years. Can you imagine any one of us working in that jail and going home every day for 10 years? They are under a life sentence. This is part of the county responsibility to provide a safe, humane, working place for our employees. So look at it from that perspective, but that's not the only perspective. What is different at this time? Different is, the motto is treatment over incarceration. Half of the money which will be collected by this levy will go to treatment, will go to community programs, will go to all kinds of help and services. Only 50% will go to the jail operations. It's a big, big change, which we have not seen in proposals before. It took a lot to come to consensus, Mr. Buchanan worked for several years, and myself. And finally, I want to tell you, my base camp, I will follow the plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone, for sitting down tonight. This was amazing. We have one more round of applause for all our candidates. We have one more round of applause for all our candidates.